Chair for a minute here.
Guys, go, go sign it. All right. Do please join us for the pledge allegiance just in time.
Sorry, Lou.
Sorry.
We were meeting in the middle, they don't want.
Right. Budge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. I got a few folks coming in here just in time. So guys, we're just getting ready to going to open up the public hearing. So we want to get a chance, sign into the sign in sheet there. And all right. No pan, no pan. We'll get one for you. All right. We got one, got one, got one. All the chaos I started. All right. With that, we're going to open up the public hearing for the extension of license privileges for an on premise establishment for capacity located at 133 Main Street, Demers Scotta Main, oh, four, five, or three. We already know that. Is there any questions, comments, concerns from the general public? Susan, that's you.
The only thing I have to say is we've been very respectful. Quite frankly, when we apply for a license, we had no idea what we really wanted to do. When we found that out, we immediately put an application.
Thank you, Jeff. We get a microphone there. I keep forgetting we're on. That's all right. Well, if there's any, does the board have any questions, comments, concerns?
Basically, what we do is we pour it off the area and we're very, we're not like a hardcore bar. It's usually event focused.
Yeah.
So if we do poetry readings or public storytelling, or like we do Rocky Horror once a year.
Yeah.
That's when we extend it out, but we don't really want people drinking in the parking lot in general. That's not our thing.
That's a chief factor.
Unless it's a really bad day. That's another bad.
Good enough, good enough. Nothing from the board? Not hearing any other questions, comments, concerns? We'll close the public hearing. And with that, we'll call the July sixth Board of Select Board, Demers Scotta meeting to order. I think you folks are all right with moving this. So you guys can don't have to hang out till the end.
No, we have to go back to work.
Yeah, yeah. We're not going to wait to wait till after the very end.
I don't know if you guys are aware of that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yep. So we just need a motion.
Motion to extend license privileges privileges for an on premise establishment at 133 Main Street.
Second, Josh, Lou seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move that along for you. Thank you, guys. Go back to work. All right. Before we get too far ahead of ourselves, I just, I think we should introduce Andrea Kuschger.
Thank you.
All right. I knew I was going to ask you earlier. So to the, to the board, this is actually technically your second meeting, but we had a special board meeting. So it was a little, little bit quick. So we didn't introduce you, but welcome aboard and.
Thank you. Pleased to be here.
Go ahead. So thank you.
Spell it. K E U S H G U E R I A N.
Thank you, girl.
You're welcome.
All right. What's next on the agenda? We've got to select some officers here. So.
I'll make a motion that we reelect Daryl as chair.
I will second.
Me too.
Any discussion? All right. I guess I call all those in favor. I know this week. All right. I'll stay near on this one. Well, thank you for your faith in me. I'll see if I can do it for.
Done really well.
All right.
We can bitch at you.
Yeah, it's fine. It's fine. So, so we have what we have second, how's that go? Second vice chair or third or first is go chair, right?
Vice chair.
First, first vice. First vice chair.
Second vice.
And second vice chair, right? Yeah. I always get them mixed up with the second and for her. So do we have any nominations for first?
I'll make a motion that we reelect Lou as first vice chair.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Lou, you good with that?
All right.
Okay. All right.
I'm making the final motion that we reelect Josh as second vice chair.
I wasn't.
I'll, I'll.
All right. Well, we elect them.
We'll second that as well. I'll second that. So any discussion? All those in favor? All right. So we're, so I get to keep doing this, huh?
Yeah.
I thought I was off the hook here for. All right. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? We have June 15th and June 21st.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes for June 15th and June 20th.
Second.
Thank you, Lou. What's that one? Just say. June 15th and June 21st.
Which was a special.
Yes.
Meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So you'll have to do those separately because Tom wasn't.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty first.
Right. I make, okay, I make a motion. We accept the June 15 minutes.
All right.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
I abstained.
Yeah, yeah. It was in you weren't there. Yeah. So three of us here. So motion carries.
I'll make a motion approved June 21st meeting.
Thank you, Josh.
Second.
Lou seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? And we've got some payroll, financial reports here. Let's see a reason we can do.
Payroll warrant seventy two, seventy three, and seventy four.
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Lou seconds. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries there and we have accounts payables. Should be two.
There's accounts payable.
We've got one in seventy five, seventy.
It's down there.
And what's, we have another one.
Number one, but probably I'll take them separate.
We can do them separate. Yeah. I hear a motion on number seventy five.
No, I can't. I got a family member on that. So I have to.
Okay, Lou's making a motion on AP seventy five. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Are we sending them back?
I haven't seen it. Josh has to abstain. And are you yay on? Okay. So we've got, we've got three.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant number three. I mean, number one.
You sneaking an extra one in there?
Accounts payable number one.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Lou seconds. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Okay, it's four and Tom, you abstaining?
I haven't seen it.
Seen it yet.
Oh, sorry. Do you want?
It's all good, Tom. Sorry.
I'm sure it is, but.
That's why we got, we got four and one. We'll move it along. So, yep, not a problem. Mr. Manager, any citizens comments and correspondence that we?
Yes.
Well, mine's up. Can I perhaps yield to, so if we can go to official action items, number three, for the sake of Cheryl.
Oh, we want to do share. Yes. I almost forgot about Cheryl.
Yeah. And then come back to mine.
Throws them at me. So, yes, I forget. We're going to move up and let, so Cheryl can go home on time, more or less. So we're going to look at some unanticipated expenses, fun, fun stuff. So I think everybody's got the packet there with the expenses with them. So. Uh, yeah, Cheryl, do you want to, are you going to present? Do you want to come up and go over them or what's, uh? We got to get you up in front of the mic over here. Minute to get to the. Yeah, thank you, Dodo, for reminding me that Cheryl was over there waiting patiently.
Andy, is that one in our packet or?
I put it on the table. Might be under your.
Emergency.
There was a small one in the packet, but.
Yeah. I've lost it somewhere, but go ahead, Cheryl.
This year, we just had an unanticipated expenses, the advertising, we advertised for a planner multiple times. The assessor, we had to run the ad for that. That wasn't budgeted for. So we went over that line by that much. Cell phones. We went over by two fifty eight. We purchased the new cell phone. Went from thirty dollars a month to a little bit more. This is just the purchase. Moving forward, we're probably going to have to cap contingency for the cell phone because at that time when we came through the budget, we were still thinking it was going to be thirty dollars a month. It's not. Payroll for July twenty one, that occurred during June thirteenth and June twenty sixth, but we physically paid it on July first of fiscal year twenty two. So I was under the impression that we could get the auditors to back that into twenty one. Yes, twenty one. We can't. That audit's already closed. So we have to attack those funds. The two supplies that we purchased for the gifts for Board of Selectmen and Harbor Master, we're not budgeted. So that's just a little bit there. We did not budget for the intern to go to the conference for the New England Management Managers Conference. So that's the one nineteen town reports came twenty one dollars over. And then multiple moderators for multiple special town meetings that we didn't budget for, we paid a hundred dollars each time we had the moderators. And then the retirement buyout is the retirement buyout three eighty for Lucas. And that equals out five eight oh three point oh nine, which is exactly what the expense or administration expense is over. Five eight oh three point zero nine and oh and a zero in the number. Municipal building. That is a lot of electricity.
Yeah.
The solar panels are broken. I'm not sure. They said, when we called them before, there was swirls or rodents that chewed some wires.
Oh, okay.
And they're not covered by warranty because that's not an act of God. That's just.
Rodents.
Yep. Solar power, when I had talked to them a couple of months ago, they said they were working on getting it fixed, that it was in their best interest to get it fixed. We haven't heard anything from them. No follow up since then.
Are they fixed now?
No. So going into fiscal year twenty three, we're already going to be in the hole because we're paying for full electricity.
How, how long have we been down?
Since about mid March.
Mid March.
Sorry, Lou. Go ahead. I don't, I thought you would have.
No.
Yeah. So I, I just, my only question I have is why do we have a EV station still charging people's cars if we're the ones that are going to pay for it?
Yeah.
It's hooked to the bathroom. Agreed. We went through it to see if we could do a report to see how many taxpayers in Demers Scotta have an electric vehicle versus gas or diesel. There's not very many.
Well, I'm just saying.
No, it's, yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying right now, if the solar panels are down, then we have to pay CMP for, for the electricity for the building and the EV station. Why are we still have the EV station up and running?
That was part of the grant and I honestly have no idea if that was part of the grant that we received that to get the electronic vehicle charged station. We needed to.
Well, I think it was an add on. Do, which made sense, but, but yeah.
That was with the solar panels supplying the electricity, not the town subsidizing people's charging vehicles.
You've got it in this building. You've got it for the streetlights or traffic lights?
Traffic, traffic lights, street lights.
Yep.
Everything we have a meter on.
Contract that I could pull out that says, you know, if anything fails, what happens?
Like, yeah.
We just have to suck it up and figure out where that money comes from because we didn't budget for it. We budgeted for solar energy and.
Yeah. Cause sorry, now we're on the hook for the repairs.
Yep. On the hook for the repairs. We're on the hook for the electricity.
So why, why are we on the hook for repairs if we're the ones that are leasing this, if they're supplying?
Because we, in that.
We have not, we haven't bought it.
In that contract, it says something about repairs and insurance and I, I don't have a contract with me. So I couldn't tell you.
So we can look into it. We better dig into it.
Yeah.
There's some digging in the contract.
Or started to do that today. So.
All right.
Yeah.
We can find out. Yeah.
But I, but I have a problem.
Yeah.
If we're paying top dollar now for electric, you know, rates for kilowatts, why are we still have a EV station going?
Know if there's.
Yeah.
If there's a way you can unplug the, I don't know. Shut that off because the EV station was done through a grant. So I don't know if the grant terms say that the town has to keep that going for a certain amount of time. And if the town has to provide that electricity, I don't, I don't know what the grant, what the grant said.
Do we know when it's going to be repaired?
Nope. Their answer was it's in our best interest to get it repaired. We understand that.
Well, they're going to be waiting on parts. Yeah. Everything's going to go overseas on solar panels. So, yeah. So, neat.
My gosh.
Why were they so remiss in letting us know it was down?
I'm not sure. I, we, all of a sudden our electric bill started jumping up.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's when we called to say, I don't understand, because I just don't understand the solar power deal anyway. So I called and said, I don't understand. They said, oh, it's broken. It's been broken for a little while. So we were never even notified that it was down.
I think we need to review the contract.
Do you recall how long it was down before we were notified?
No, I just noticed in our bills.
That's what I meant. The bills.
You started seeing some, the power bills climbing back a while ago. Yeah.
And when did, roughly, when did they tell us?
Um, when I called them.
June.
Just a couple of weeks ago. Yeah.
Yeah, that's unacceptable.
Yeah. I brought it to one of the meetings we had talked about and said, oh yeah, solar power is not working.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And then we haven't heard anything from them since.
Right.
It was an inverter that they lost from the rats or whatever chewed through the wire. And that's what they're having a hard time getting. And they did try to go the warranty route first, which stalled, which delayed, you know, caused the delay, you know, even further.
Yeah. Wonderful. So, yeah. So we need to look into the, yeah, like Josh says, the EV station and what we're spending.
Yeah. And I think that's what, dig into the grant to find out what the grant stipulations were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who will, who will look into that?
Andy or I will.
Okay.
He's, he's put hands.
We give him plenty of homework.
Yeah.
And then the PD, the sixty six ninety nine point six five is the same thing. That was FY twenty one's payroll. His budget was able to absorb a lot of it because really the payroll was around eight grand for the first one in July. So that's the, the overage we're at now. So it's nineteen two fifty one point five five is what we're requesting from the emergency fund. And that's article twenty five in the paper or in the annual town meeting warrant.
Yeah, for the surplus air. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Cheryl or Andy on the unanticipated expenses?
No.
All right.
So I guess one only question is on that payroll issue, was that any of that money carried forward from the, from?
No, no. Cause I thought that's what the auditors could just do on their backside stuff that they'd just be able to, to jungle it. Andy had said, once they closed it out and we reported that, then it's over.
I'm also.
And that's why you have both payroll now.
Yeah.
All right. We want to, yeah. You want to go home?
I mean, I can stay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to move the unanticipated expenses. Emergency spending authorization allowable per article twenty five for the annual town meeting warrant. That, that cover that, will it? All right. And we hear a second, remember?
Seconds.
Lou's got that one. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Passes there. So we'll get you.
Thank you very much.
Don't want to spend any more money.
Go home and have stuff.
I'm going to go home and have stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right. I don't want to see it again. We've got a couple of our official action items knocked off here.
We did that.
Yeah. One and, one and three are all set. Andy, I'll go back. I got ahead of us. Do any, any citizens comments or anything on your, on your desk coming through or?
Yeah, we had one a couple of weeks ago regarding, I guess, a march that went through town or demonstration, march parade. And there's a request for another one. Their issues kind of based. It's not like a Fourth of July parade. It's, it's a, it's a, a march and demonstration for a particular issue. So we've had a second one come in just this past weekend and I've been working with the chief to
Okay.
Talk about how to coordinate, you know, the resources that'll be need to close down a lane of traffic to go from across the bridge and up to Rising Tide Co-op. You know, have a little bit of reservation, just given that it's summer and that our resources are pretty thin to begin with.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
So we're just working with the chief. I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up. So I'm not sure how the town is, how the board has kind of handled those requests in the past.
I don't, historically, we haven't had.
Haven't had any.
Regular.
Sure.
Yeah, they're usually, they're usually in Newcastle.
Yeah, they may, you may have the breast cancer walk or some of the, the other type walks people do and, but nothing for, you know, what, march for a cause.
Yeah. It may be something that you're getting these call, we may have to have some sort of protocol for it or something.
Permit, permit or notification, so many days notification. And then if it involves too much, we may have to bill for special detail.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, as the chief's point, I mean, we typically have two patrol at a time and the chief is depending on the time of day on as well. But if it's happening on a time where we need additional staff to come in, then that's a minimum call out time. And then at a significant rate too. And, you know, and trying to acknowledge that, you know, our staff need some time off as well. And to just trying to balance that with the rest, you know, with what we have and what the town's looking for. Um, I know the chief had reached out to the sheriff as well to see on the other side of Newcastle, what the protocol and what they were doing and communicating that request there too.
I was going to say, maybe they reach out to some other towns or whatever, see what they're, what they, what they do. Maybe we can piggyback on the, on a existing standard or something is.
In the meantime, are you okay with the chief and I working that out?
Yeah, I guess the only thing is, is maybe we look at limiting to a certain time of day.
Yeah.
You know, because if we've had businesses downtown struggling to survive as it is, and then we're going to close down a street, Main Street.
It's pretty quiet around midnight.
Yeah. Within workable reason, you know.
Yeah. What time did they do the last room? I forgot.
I think it was a Saturday mid morning.
Right? I think it was a Saturday.
Request for this one's a Sunday at five.
Okay.
My, and one of the questions I have, and I'll follow up with them is, you know, whether or not they could, you know, walk along the sidewalk as opposed to shutting down a lane of traffic with an escort in July in town and see if that would be okay. Cause there's, you know, if you stand on the left side going all the way up and there's a crosswalk at Rising Tide between that and the grocery store. So if we just had a detail up there to help make sure everyone got to cross that and Church Street intersection, I think those are the two worst ones.
When is the, the, the time, when are they trying to?
Requests for Sunday, the twenty fourth of July.
Yeah.
At five.
Yeah. Okay. No, I'm fine. I mean, I'm fine with you and the chief working through with, you know, we've voiced some concerns here and I think we can trust between the, the chief and yourself to work something out, but it may be something long term. We've got to look into having a, a written, you know, something a little more substantial. So, because it's, it's, it's new to, it's new, new to everybody this, you know, these past few years. I mean, we've had our standard parades with the details all budgeted in for and stuff, but a little different. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you and the chief are the ones to make a draft to Daryl as to what to recommend.
Okay. Yeah, I think one of the concerns, the chief and I shared and were talking about was when they become issues based or demonstrations about a particular issue versus a celebration like Pumpkin Fest or July fourth.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and, you know, should events, not suggesting this one would be or not, but, you know, just being cautious of, you know.
Yeah.
You know, the one that was had a few weeks back, um, you know, seemed fine, but we've learned, of course, from that, like, well, maybe we're stretching ourselves a little bit, depending on the weekend. And that's what my only concern in July, is it okay? Can we do it? Is it going to cost us more? And are we okay with doing that? Or should there be? So we can draft, work on drafting something.
Yeah.
For something consideration this summer and.
All right. But I think we definitely need to make accommodations for, for things like that happening.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what, and just having the protocols down to make sure. Yeah. Cause.
They have to be reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't just shut down traffic for two hours or three hours.
It could become a bi weekly thing if everybody's, you know, there's a lot of issues happening, you know, every two weeks or something we start having. So then it becomes a, like, okay. Yeah. You, you start with one and then it gets, it snowballs. So.
Well, the other thing is Newcastle, Newcastle does a lot where people just stand on the side of the road and they have signs. So.
Yeah.
They don't have a marching at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
They have a good.
So that's, that's another thing to consider.
We'll get, yeah, you, yourself and the chief is, yeah, feel it out and let us, you know, keep us in the loop.
True.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
That's for passing the buck.
That's fine. All right. Just go through my report. I don't have any other.
Nothing else. I don't, I don't think there's anybody on Zoom or in the crowd here that has anything for this evening. Have you all sat back there?
We, we did have another, I think two letters come in. Their attempt, I guess it was in part, an appeal for parking tickets and also some suggestions perhaps for, I think there was an ordinance revision for the parking on your agenda or goals for last year. Um, I don't think that got done. So, um, the parking ordinance. So that's just something that I think the chief and I was earmarked for the manager and the chief to work on. So keep, kind of keeping those for consideration as we look to.
But he doesn't have any people, he doesn't have any money on the payroll now, right?
We have two seasonal parking ambassadors that are in town.
Yeah.
So.
Seen them kicking around.
I think our biggest issue right now that I keep hearing and it's repeated is the perhaps confusion about parking. You know, if you're coming to say kayak or use a boat and you park in the boater parking part along the water, it's intended for permit holders. And so we do have some signs coming that say permit required. I think we're going to try and put a couple of arrows underneath that, that point between the two signs to make that a little clearer because there have been, most of them have been people that are boating. They just don't know they need a permit.
They didn't know they needed a permit to do it.
It isn't new, but it's just new users perhaps.
Which is an easy, that's understandable. So, cool. All right. Yeah, we want to go through, you've got a list of manager items here. You want to?
Yeah, mostly.
Rattle through these.
Yeah, mostly. Yeah, mostly capital, yeah, mostly capital projects.
Yeah.
You know, with all the work you guys got going on, uh, I'll start with Miles Street. Um, I did provide you with, I just got them this afternoon, so I didn't have them earlier. Um, had a meeting today with, um, Brooke Betts, I think his name is, um, with Miles, um, and Andrew, um, with Gartley and Dorsky came up. Um, so we met and talked about the causeway in Miles Street, um, and the, um, he brought up kind of an advanced copy of a draft. Um, he says, says, said he was about a week or two perhaps. Um, out for finalizing these plans in the, in the bid specs. Um, but if the board was okay with going, kind of giving the green light to put it out to bid again, uh, with these modifications from what was previously proposed. Um, we could have it out by the end of July and hopefully by the third week in August, when you meet, um, have, um, bid results back.
Do you know what the modifications are?
Yeah, so they shortened up the, the new, um, asphalt surface. Um, it was proposed originally to go all the way to Bristol Road. Um, they're bringing that new surface back, um, closer to that Schooner Street intersection. Um, and again, they're not going as far into the parking lot as originally proposed. Um, we were talking today about the width of the, um, the roadway through there. And some of the design mods they're doing by not putting a retaining wall in. Um, you know, we're gonna have to put more material out. Um, we're gonna raise the road there about two feet, I think he said, two, two and a half feet. Um, so that's gonna, you know, fan out some riprap out to be able to, uh, accommodate that, that taller height. So the shoulders need to be built out a little bit further. Um, but one thing they did, um, they talked about was, um, I think they're gonna put in there as like a bid ma, um, alternative to have a raised sidewalk or a, um, an extension of the road surface and have a level grade. Um, a place to walk, but not a raised sidewalk, um, just to see what those price differences are.
Sure.
Um, if it, the budget allows for it, they do raise. If it doesn't, then they'd be prepared to do, um, you know, have.
Part of the road with a, a.
Right. And they could put a line down, they could stamp it.
Pass and lane there.
As walking path.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Um, they talked about, there'll have to be a guardrail on one side, but they're removing the pedestrian fence that would be on the sidewalk side between the sidewalk and the water. Um, they identified that as a pretty substantial cost in the original bid.
Yeah, that was crazy expensive, wasn't it? Yeah.
It was expensive.
It was, yeah.
Um, they were talking about the lighting that's, um, on the plans. There you see on the sidewalk side, the, the blue dots. On the bottom of that along the water and in roadway. Um, so we were looking at that and he said each, each streetlight setup, um, I think he said was gonna run about fifteen thousand each. Um, and so one thing that we were talking about doing is maybe just putting in the conduit. Um, and putting in the basis for the lights. That way the infrastructure's there.
Yeah.
Say the hospital wanted to expand it in the future, but at least they aren't digging back into the riprap and, um, by doing that, there'd be some substantial savings.
Yeah. What, what's, what's there now for?
Nothing, streetlight. There's a, there's a street lamp, um, in the parking lot, up closer to the hospital. And then there's another one down towards where that schooner street is.
Okay, yeah, right by Schooner Street. And that's it, right?
And then there's like a sidewalk light on that schooner street sidewalk.
Yeah, but the, yeah, the causeway proper, there's no, you know.
What's the thickness of the asphalt?
Um.
Josh usually has that.
Sure, yeah, I believe they're going with, uh, two inch base and an inch and a half surface.
Which was fine if they did everything else according to plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, oh, go ahead, Josh.
I thought it was supposed to be three, three inches, no? It doesn't have to be.
No.
Um, before, when they talked about doing the riprap, they talked about wetland remediation.
Someone has the same thing.
Um, what did Andrew? He was working with the Army Corps of Engineers, I believe, to get this permit is.
Permit's been, uh, it's available. We need to pay for it.
Correct. And then I, with it came the wetland remediation. We have to figure out pay some, pay a fee.
We didn't talk, um, in great detail about what the remediation looked like. He just said the Army Corps was okay with the plan presented and that there was a fee for doing the work in the water.
Okay.
Um, so we aren't paying. I think we're good to go with the exception of just need, you know, having to pay that, but we won't do that until we get bid specs back and, uh,
Right.
You know, hit the trigger on that.
I didn't know if DEP had some other issue with it.
I think they're good to go.
Okay.
Um, I know one of the.
And us at the end there.
You know, perhaps what it was, was that kind of pond or that drain, that pond area that's on the
On the left.
South side of that causeway.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. They wanted us drained on the riprap because we were going further out into the wetlands.
The original plans had a, had a concrete, had a cast.
Okay.
Retaining wall, um, which was much more expensive. And then, so the option was go back to riprap, but it, that's when we got into the
Okay.
Remediation.
Remediation stuff. So, so, but we're, we're, as far as we know right now, the engineers were looking clear on that.
Yeah, let me see if I got the big plans here. I think. It was so much. It was so much per foot, um, and I, I have that. And, you know, Andrew was saying it would be good to get that paid sooner rather than later, um, only because that, he's seen that number increasing. Um.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that's taken care of in the, um, in that permitting process with Army Corps already, once we pay that.
Yeah.
In the culvert that's going underneath Schooner Street and Miles Street. The big one is the one we're doing the money for the, um, ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I need to talk with Matt and make sure I understand where all the different.
Yeah.
Money was coming from for that project and some of the other ones still.
We allocated a big chunk for, for this project.
Yeah, I think it was about a hundred and, hundred and eight this time around in the, in the fall allocation in seventy-five, I think it was, in the, in the spring allocation or last fall.
Yeah, I don't know how we have to word it, but that culvert is a separate deal compared to what the Miles Street, I think.
Um, the concerns.
So it's a bid on separately?
Well, it will be within something, but we have to do it so far, so we don't qualify ourselves using those funds.
Yeah, I think so. It probably refers to the.
Yeah.
The clean, probably that. So the, the ARPA funds, you were allowed to use it for infrastructure for sewer, wastewater and broadband. And I think under the sewer and wastewater, it was the clean water or drinking water program. And within that is storm drainage. And so I'm guessing that's probably what he was.
So that's, we have to figure out how we need to word that.
Right.
Play the.
Qualify those monies for that. And not include it, well, included in the, in a bid, but I, I think it has to be within that packet, but.
Yeah, I'll double check with Andrew. I mean, he could add that or have that in there as like a kind of separate component of the project perhaps, especially where it's, you know, further up on that causeway.
Does, has Miles expressed any interest? I know we've talked about the, the water line replacement and that, um, while we were doing this project.
They, they will be replacing the water line.
They will, yeah.
They are very interested in replacing.
Well, yeah, I knew it's not, that's not our project, but we don't want to rip the road up again. So, okay.
So they'll do it at the same time as this.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, that's, that's good. Yeah, okay.
I mean, all this has to come within a certain budget, but that's the attention at this moment is that it be all completed at once. And as far as they know, the sewer, they're being told the sewer line's much newer and still perfectly fine, so.
Yeah.
It'll be just the water line and they plan on, they have some funds that they'll be able to.
Gotcha. Oh, that's good to hear. So, okay.
They're all water.
Great, great. Okay. So, yeah, so right now, as far as we know, we're just gonna move ahead and, and get this wrapped up and get the, the bid package together.
Okay. Um, is that a kind of a green light for them to work on those bid packages and advertise them? So we'll meet again in two weeks.
As long as there's no permitting issues, if we're fine with the remediation and stuff, that thing's covered, I.
And the remediation has been passed, true.
So, a- as far as we know, yeah, that's what the engineers are telling us, that they've, they've got the riprap in here, so they've worked out whatever, yeah.
My understanding, it was like a thirty-two thousand dollar permit, um, to be working in the wetland, um.
Ooh, yeah, yeah.
Must be it. Um, the only thing I have is to, you know, make sure these projects are flexible, but we can't have them super duper flexible. We don't want somebody working on some of these things in the fall and trying to put base coats down and
Yep.
Then we run into really run into problems.
Right, yeah, we did talk about, um, I mean, having it an option in the bid. So if they, if they want to do it in the fall or a spring option, I'm extending that project out into the spring. The hospital did say they've got two relatively large building projects going on. This fall, so they wouldn't mind if it was in the spring, but they want it done as soon as it can as well. So, I mean, I think by leaving it as an option for the contractors, if someone's in Tyson, has time this fall and wants to do it, but if they want to wait and, you know, whether they start it in the fall, I was asking that question. Um, you know, we could put a base coat down, you know, where it's a coarser material and then come back in the spring when we're doing other paving and just put the finish coat on then potentially. And some of that might be about pricing. I mean, we can only go that far with a base coat and make the top, the finish coat with the finer material. When we're doing something else.
I didn't know if we should, if Andrew recommends a certain date that we cut off construction, you know, in the fall.
He was thinking.
And a, and an opening date for the spring.
He didn't talk about a date in the spring to kind of start. Um, he did say, you know, if in the fall, it needed to be done by the second week in November.
Yes.
In his opinion. And then he didn't mention a spring start.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't believe, uh, everybody around here is so busy. I think any project that happens will happen in the spring.
Yeah.
You never know.
Right. And for, and with that.
Late in the season, yeah.
With that, we were, um, of course concerned about locking in any kind of price, but from our perspective and as well as the contractor's perspective and the fear that they bid high, not knowing what's gonna happen and with the biggest, one of the bigger parts of that being the asphalt prices. Um, so he was talking about tying, um, unit price to the federal asphalt, liquid asphalt number, um, and that allows for, you know, good or bad, you know, of the variation. So it's more fair, at least if that's okay with board and hopefully prices go down for everyone.
Kind of has to be. Don't have, the only way you can do it.
Right. And it gives the contractor that, that kind of that security that it'll be fluctuate, you know, fluctuate if it goes up or down and
Right.
Doesn't lock us one way or the other.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, then it can raise on the same page. We'll proceed and plug in away at it there. Next one. Got a lot of these. But it's good to see some, yeah, some stuff moving along. So you've got, uh, yeah, Church Street update and.
Yep, also kind of, uh, started the conversation yesterday and got, um, updated numbers for some more data that the state would like to see for the Castner Brook, um, crossing Crest, Castner Creek. Um, and it's about ten thousand dollars worth of additional work. It was the consultant that was working before. Um, Joel, Joseph McLean, um, he had done some data collection before on title issues and, and whatnot. And so, um, in working with the state, Matt was working with the Coastwise program, with the Maine Coastal Program, um, and they want more data to be able to run. So I think from my understanding, the program, the Coastwise program really wants towns to look at alternatives to any of those solutions, not just look at one solution for, for the flooding issue, but look at multiple options and show that it's the best, um, return. Um, on what you choose. And so they need, need some more data for that to be able to put that together. And so I was look, working with Cheryl to see, um, the possibility of a carry forward from the, some of the planning funds, because this is a project that we started. Bob was working on before he left and
Yeah.
The planning and development line does have a little bit that was unspent. Um, and, and, you know, the conversation should have been happening this spring and it, you know, just kind of fell through the crack a little bit, so.
It'd be nice if there was a, another grant available for that, because I think that's how we did the first run of it, was a grant, yeah.
Yeah, I can check and see. I think there was some money. Was that some money that came from the Island Institute on that one before?
I can't remember.
Can't remember either, yeah.
Much happening.
Yeah, yeah. I know it was one we said, yes, approved.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can look. The challenge now is, of course, timing.
Timing, yeah.
And, you know, there's a couple, there's another grant, um, coming up. I think they're anticipating this fall for the state to receive some money to put forward for projects like this that, um, you know, Matt was told about. And so that's the concern is getting the work done before that period opens up for requests. Um, that was the thought I was having about using it to carry forward and continuing the project that we started last year.
Last fiscal year. Shovel ready. It's, we're, they're that far ahead.
Right.
County does, asks grants.
Okay.
So I don't know if they still do that. It's a smaller amount grant. So you may want to look and just see if they still do those. I know, I mean, a little bit would help.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. So that's more or less on a, not on a whole, but it, it, more information.
Right.
Keep moving on it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, Hodgson Street, our, um, paperwork's in for that CBPG grant. Um, it's being reviewed. It's what it is at this point. Um, Egypt and Belvedere Road, um, they did provide, the engineers provided the plans and the bid specs for that. Um, and it falls in the same, you know, thing about timing and when do you want to put it out to bid? And do you want to put it out with the option to do it in the spring at this point? And see what you get? Do you want to wait till, you know, closer to the end of the calendar year and put it out then, when maybe they're thinking about spring work?
The, uh, there was culverts that, those in the plans now in the engineering for that, uh, it would be in the bid, uh,
Right.
The bid package. I think that's where we left off, was it three or four or something?
It might be in, in there. I can't. Read something about it.
Yeah, they have one.
Yeah, we'd asked them to go back and include the, uh, they said there were three or four at the, the, the presentation we had. That was, when was that?
No, two on Belvedere to be replaced.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Did? Yeah, you weren't.
Two on Egypt, none on Belvedere, on the plans they've got here.
So, okay, so they're included, yeah.
So you said there's none on Belvedere, but two on Egypt?
Yes.
Slide those down.
We had some that were identified.
Is that, I wouldn't say, altogether?
Yeah, you take a look, Josh. See if you can find them first, I can.
That top page, I believe, is Belvedere.
Yeah, because we want to go in and do the, I mean, the covers would need to be done and then that's gonna push us out on paving till next, what, in the spring anyway, right?
Yeah, that'd be ambitious. Yeah, we gotta.
Settle and, yeah.
Depends whether we're doing it or contracting it out.
Yeah, right. We don't want to, uh, do culverts after it's paved. That happens too many times.
Time to settle is always nice.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, you, you want to do it right. Like, have to push it out further, but, um.
Yeah, you got two culverts. We might want to ask Andrew about the Belvedere ones before we.
Okay, double check on the Belvedere.
The Wild, that Wild Hunt one, when he came with that special town meeting, we need.
Oh, he'd asked about.
We need to address those issues. And I get a, we gotta ask about if those have been addressed in the spec.
Is that closer to Route One or further down?
It's closer to the Noburro Town Line on, um, I can't remember what the name of Wild was, Robert. It's right before the bridge there.
But not the bridge.
Not the bridge.
Okay.
There's a couple before.
So are we thinking about going, if we get the bid package together, going out for, if including the culverts in it? They'd have to be done now or fall and then the paving would be follow-up in the spring. So, um, I follow that, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, if I get a better handle on where we are, Matt had kind of, in his mind, earmarked certain things for some of the reserve funds that we have in the capital project funds. You know, whether we have the ability to use some of that to separate it from the bid and just have it done this fall, separate from this, um, would probably be if that's more appealing than having someone come in and same contractor start it in the fall and come back in the.
Right, yeah. How do we, yeah. Because either way, they need to be done, but it makes more sense to.
I know there was issues on Egypt Road and I don't know that they were addressing it per se in the bid specs, but shoulders and, and drainage through there and then canopy. Um, there's, there's going to be a lot of cutting on that Egypt Road before they even put paving equipment through there, I think. I think some of the canopy's coming down in the, over the traveled way there.
Geez, I get that on my selectmen discussion issues.
Mark had taken me around there. He was kind of pointing out some of those things when I met with him.
Yeah, yeah, I guess there's some areas that.
Quickly noticed the shoulders were kind of like right at, there's certain, the water's not able to shed off of that. And so.
Well, we had, we had some shoulder work and ditching within, for those bond.
Okay.
So, yeah. Um, that was supposed to be in that bid packet. I just haven't looked at it lately, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'll send it up with that last.
Send it out afterwards if you want to look through it.
So, yeah, just make sure everything's covered in there and that realistically, we're looking at spring for paving. Anyway, right? We get culverts in first. Let's go first.
Do them afterwards.
Do them afterwards.
What do you mean? You're gonna put the state put one in on Bisky Road and they got paved over it this week?
Yep.
Ah, woo!
Yeah.
Yeah, how long good second.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, I know. You're gonna pay.
That'll be, that'll be the experimental trial.
We'll see how it does. So, all right. Well, let's go. Make it some headway, though. Things are, things are moving along. Um, all right, Andy, what you got? Heater Road?
Uh, we do have the last, from my understanding, the last deed, um, that was we were looking forward to be able to you know, um, accept or take on that first thousand feet. Is it a heater road? It's public way?
Yeah.
Um, Amanda needs to review that.
Just thank you.
The two we're on. Yeah. Amanda does want to review that just to make sure that they signed the most recently uh worded quick uh deed. Um, so I sent that over to her um to look at.
Okay.
Um, it was, I assume Hugh did it. I didn't ask him. I saw that someone had touched it up a little bit over the weekend or before the weekend.
Oh.
You said sometimes he would do that with the York rake.
Sometimes.
A little, it's a little smoother. Um.
What, what, what are we talking about?
Heater Road.
The heater road.
Okay. Yeah.
I know.
Complaints taking ownership up to the Hudson Road.
Heater Road. Thank you.
I know a complaint came in uh last week towards the end of the week and Becky had taken it. And I know it was one of those, you know, at this point, it's not a town road and responsibilities of the property owners that live on the road to help maintain it. And um, I, I think, I think what we can, because we own property on there, it shouldn't be our sole responsibility. Um, so we had taken the request and some things happened, but in the meantime, we did explain that we were trying to go through this process.
Yeah, I'm still working the process out. So it's just, you know. Uh, once, once that happens, we can look at a longer term solution or whatever. So.
Yeah. So what happened on this parking lot?
Parking lot.
Um, just say we have a meeting scheduled for, I believe, next week uh with five uh would um right Pierce and and I um and preferably the contractor that would be doing the work um to all be on the same page. Um, I think Leanna as well, um, involved in that meeting.
District. Yeah.
You know, the questions about you know, who is their fault, whose fault? And, you know, making sure that there's, uh, this is a coordinated project to mark where the SAG was identified to make sure that there's a third party inspector on site. Fire had offered.
So, okay, sorry.
There was someone there that was kind of independent. Um, so working through those details to
Yeah.
make sure it's all.
Yeah, because I think on a town, we need somebody if I wants to have somebody there that's, they foot the bill or whatever and have somebody a third party that's um yeah, that'd be great. So.
We'll have our engineers there. They didn't have the heads up. They had, I think, a 12 hour notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Our engineers couldn't be there.
Yeah.
For the 12 hour notice.
Everybody's best interest to have somebody there that that's separate from everything that can, so we'll figure out what's going on. So, um, all right. And you have, you said you have a meeting set up?
I believe we've locked in a date for next week.
Awesome.
Hopeful that all parties can attend.
Awesome, Andy. Okay. Uh, and question, we'll keep plugging through your notes here and.
Sure. Um, I had provided, I believe, a memo from or an email from Amanda. I don't know if you had a chance to read that.
Yeah.
Um, about the.
Probably got a chance to look it over and.
Cameron consent agreement.
Yeah.
She, you know, in a nutshell, um, wasn't comfortable um, uh, yeah, incurring more time without checking in with the board about um, where she was and what she's initially reviewed. Um, she's not willing to put her bar license up against um another, you know, just she wants to do her due diligence with her license and review the same things that another lawyer was reviewing and not just take them at their word on the surface.
Yeah.
Um, and so she's kind of checking in at this point with the board, sharing what she's, her thoughts were, gave a couple uh suggestions um and and more or less asking, do you want her to continue down that road? Um, or as was pointed out at the last meeting, um, the lawyer indicated that they didn't think there was a subdivision created, that there was this loophole in the in the law that allowed, because the court ordered a sale.
Yeah.
Kind of an exception. And so either, you know, one, one perspective is either it is an exception and it's not a invalid subdivision or it is. And so what if, if you need us can, our consent on something that doesn't exist, where, where are we signing, you know?
It's a, it's a moot point, right?
Yeah.
It looks like it doesn't exist.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any consent agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
And so if, if, if the board in the town does want to pursue down the road of acknowledging maybe something existed, Amanda's willing to go and do that extra work, but just wants the green light from the town to pursue down there. She thinks it'd be another, I think, four or six hours potentially that research.
Is this something that should go back to the planning board?
We were told from one attorney that they didn't think it was a subdivision. So.
Well, at one point in time, it was.
It was at one point.
Yeah.
There's the, you know, confusion.
What is, yeah, um, where, where is the planning board stood on this? Do we have any? Anything from the?
Did they ever go to the planning board? Or they never went? They just skipped it.
Right.
Yeah. It was after the fact, they didn't realize, because I think a code enforcement officer at the time pulled them.
It was okay.
It was okay. Yeah. And 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 it's a, I don't, it's time sensitive at this point where they're trying to avoid a um site review, you know, a full site review, which the planning board has to schedule and get in. And then so we were hoping to move things along for them if it was simple, but it's a it's a little more complicated than any of us anticipated, I think. So um.
But how can you, why do you need to sign a consent agreement if there's no violation?
Right. I mean, I, you know, again, Amanda provided her, her thoughts on what you should consider and.
Well, the Senate, the consent agreements moot. It's only with five of us today, too. It's not longstanding. So
Right.
I, I would assume that the um interests of parties would want protection longer than that. Um, in case something changed in a month or a week or a you know.
Um, anybody have an idea how long it takes to get a subdivision review? And how much money it costs?
Depends how and how, I think how big the subdivision is, if I'm remembering right. And this would be a pretty minor one, because it's only, I think, four lots, potentially, potentially. Um, and so I had the impression it would go through as long as you submit it. The advanced notice for that particular month's meeting, it could be potentially done at that meeting.
Yeah, all depends.
Not if not that, we're in the next one.
Yeah.
You know, there's certain standards of road width and
Right.
cul-de-sacs and everything else you need to
Mark utilities and a long list of things they want seen. And I think they're well on their way. I mean, they've had plot plans identified and at one point, there was a road association created for that road that ran in there and it was filed with the county.
So, okay, I mean.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we ought to leave it with the planning commission to come back and say, tell us about that.
All right. What do you got down there?
Technically, there's no violation.
Yeah, right now, there's no, I know, no violation. Yeah. There, there may have been, but it's too late to go back.
The only thing I was kind of concerned about was the time that it was in violation coming back.
Yeah.
But then if it's explained to you that a town code enforcement had said
Right.
everything was good, you know, or how, how can we go back on it? So.
So the, the title, their, their title attorney, but the other I, I, I'm, I'm, I can't remember who was pushing back on the other side of it with uh that needs the consent. It's the uh the other party, right? The financing.
Well, wait a minute. Does a code enforcement officer have the authority to uh change the rules?
No.
No.
So he was, he was a mistake. It's not.
It was a family. Oh, all these things were.
Oh, I know that.
At the beginning. So that's where it kind of got murky.
Yeah, but the code enforcement officer didn't have an authority or to do that.
Not to change some, no, no. Uh, but typically, um.
So there, there is a violate. There's two things. The guy shouldn't have done, or the person, whoever it was shouldn't have done what he did, because there were rules to say that that was a subdivision requirement. So he changed the rules basically and he didn't have the authority to do that. Right? So you can't rely on him having done that to just dismiss it.
But I don't.
Well, now there is no issue, because as things got merged into one piece of land.
Yeah.
So there is no violation.
There's three parcels now and one was technically there under some sort of court, you know, as they presented to us, some sort of court ordered sale and, you know, in a family, you know, divorce issue.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of Amanda digging into it, billable hours and then no offense, Amanda.
No.
You know, she's going to get enough out of us over the years. So, um, but uh going any further.
You're saying that because it's now been changed, then it's, the issue is never going to come back up anyway. Right? And so therefore, there's no concern that what we do has any impact.
I don't think we should do anything. It's, well, that's, yeah, that we're, it's, it's, there's nothing for us to
To act on.
Because if it's not an existing issue. Well, unless we want to push a retroactive issue.
Okay.
There's nothing.
If their attorney or title insurance issue is about there being a subdivision, then I would think the recommendation would be to come forward with a planning board for a subdivision review.
Yeah.
And the minor one, it would be relatively quick compared to a more in depth, you know, a larger subdivision.
Mm hmm.
But if, if that title attorney, and that was one of Amanda's points, is why is the title attorney asking her opinion? I mean, they're, they have, you know, insurance and attorney on that end.
Well, this is why we asked and Josh brought up to have Amanda look at it. So, um, but it's um yeah, it's, it's, and even beyond that, the consent agreement doesn't hold a lot of water.
No.
So it's not a, it's not a binding, long-term binding agreement. So it's, it's, uh, it's ceremonial most part. So, um. Yeah. I mean, there's no current violation. There's nothing.
There's no, nothing for us to really do.
So what about the title company? They've approved it all, right?
Is that where the whole, I'm not sure where the holdup is on that. Is it on the financing from the bank?
Well, I think in getting financing for um, you know, money, money to build on one of the lots, um, the title insurance company they were using for to secure the mortgage identified this as an illegal subdivision potentially. And that started the, the concern.
Yeah, title company did that. Okay.
Yeah. And, and I think their recommendation apparently were, was to come to the town and ask for this consent agreement for.
For the town to say, no, it's not.
Say, you know, it was an, it was inadvertently created and, you know, it's okay. And that there wouldn't be any action taken against the property owner.
So really, our stance right now is we're not currently recognizing it as whether it was or wasn't at one point. Currently, we're not recognizing as a subdivision. So there's no.
As it was presented to the, to the board currently. Yeah.
Yeah.
So there should be no action taken.
No, I don't see that with the.
Yeah, but are we going to be able to close the loop with the title company without putting that in writing or?
It's on, it's on, it's on them with that. They get their lawyer.
Right, closing the loop.
Up to them.
Closing the loop with the, if the title insurance company thinks that there is a subdivision, then I think closing the loop is for the property owners to come forward with that plan. Get it approved by the town.
Yeah, or argue the other way with their title attorney and say that there isn't.
Yeah.
Sounds not recognizing any of that's that.
Right.
And, yeah, and that's, I think, it's probably what they're saying with the consent agreement. The consent agreement doesn't really carry any water.
Right.
As far as uh legalities go. So, um. Yeah. So you get to tell them, break the.
So really, they're putting it back in their lap.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's on them now. I mean, it's out of, it's been recognized that it's not a violation and.
Yeah, there's no uh retroactive issues. There's nothing, you know, they're not going to go back 10 years and 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 uh do anything going backwards. So.
Mm hmm.
They've got to get there. Yeah, get their uh lawyer to go the other way with it, I guess. So. All right.
That paper. So which property are we talking?
Cameron. Cameron?
C A.
C A M E R O N.
Okay. All right, we'll keep plugging away, Andy.
Yeah, uh, I don't know how you did it in the, yeah, in the past for uh annual goals or work plan. I know I, I was working off of one and trying to see where um, things had gotten landed, you know, after last fiscal year in terms of that work plan.
Mm hmm.
Um, probably 30 or so things, 40 things on that list. Um, a couple, some completed, some hadn't been started, some somewhere in the middle. Um, but did you typically have a standalone workshop to kind of go over and set those priorities and identify projects to work on or?
Usually do that, either August or September, kind of send it out.
Okay.
Get a chance to look at it.
Get a chance to look at it and then we can either do it first meeting in September or some.
Did you, so do you typically do that in line with a year or a calendar year or just kind of?
Usually once the once the new board kind of comes in and after the first couple of months, we just kind of review everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think when we did it last year, it was a.
September.
Or something with it. Yeah.
Yep.
So that seems to work pretty well. And then we get the existing one out and then we can review it and go from there.
Okay.
Probably not a huge amount of changes.
There's still a lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
Right.
We're not going to add too much to it.
I know one thing that would, um, when I was looking at it, there were, I think, end dates on there, but trying to kind of narrow that goal, that kind of timeline for each of those projects to better understand and then to work with the staff who have been identified to you know, make sure it's a realistic goal. And I think some of those that were on there, you know, some of these big capital projects, you know, kind of read as if they were perhaps expecting to be done last fiscal year and, you know, we're still waiting.
There were some expectations on there. Yeah.
So just making sure that we have a chance to make sure that we have the rest of our resources to be able to get some of those things.
Yeah, now give you time to review it and go for it. Right. Yeah, we catch up on it. So. Sounds good.
Um, CLC ambulance, Tom uh nudged me to make, you know, be able to go to that, I was at that meeting last week with Tom and um, the board, the CLC ambulance board voted five to one um to modify the formula to assess the service costs to towns. Um, so for member towns, it's going to be based on their assessed value. Um, just like county taxes and a lot of other state formulas and local formulas.
How it was at the beginning.
Yeah, surprisingly, Newcastle and uh Bremen were the biggest supporters of that. Uh, we've been harping on that for a while, but it's a big savings, 50,000 a year.
And like, thank you, Tom, for uh, you've been our liaison there with the ceiling. We've been working hard at and going all the meetings. So, yeah. So we appreciate your work and doing that. So.
Yeah, it was very interesting. They, they, they did a 180 in that meeting.
Yeah.
Where they were.
Yeah. Yeah. So what does that look like? Uh, uh, long-term savings where we're moving.
350,000 over seven years.
Yeah.
Wow.
Saving money somewhere. This is.
Oh, there's other place we could save, but.
Yeah, well. Oh.
Um, good. Yeah, going to number five, um, the DEP reached out a week or maybe two ago and just kind of gave a heads up. They were going to be sending a letter and they have just notifying us um as town officials that they will be conducting an investigation on a couple of old um sites in town that were used to um think, I thought they were.
Yeah, sludge.
Yeah, um, applicant, you know, the land applications of sludge. And so that was one way when, when it goes through a treatment plant, you dewater it, you have sludge, it's got to go somewhere. Um, it can go to a landfill, um, perhaps be incinerated, or it was oftentimes spread.
You spread, yeah.
Um, and so now they're coming back.
That's, yeah, bad.
It can be. And they're coming back and in kind of doing sampling to make sure there aren't PFAS, you know, or high PFAS numbers, um, as we've been reading a lot about that probably in the last few years.
Absolutely.
Um, so there were a few sites in town historically that have been used. Um, so just give us heads up in case people ask questions, but they will be in town and they will be looking at those, those sites.
And poking around. So. There's no toilet paper in the trees.
Other than that, all I had.
It's on.
Just one other item.
Said it anyway.
Uh, one other item on the CLC thing, Josh, they uh, we did increase the, the cost to Noble Borough and Edgcombe. So they're paying more because they don't, they didn't put money into create the ambulance service. So they have a higher rate.
Yeah, the offset.
Je- Jefferson and Jefferson and Edgcombe.
Yeah. That's right. Sorry.
I think, I mean, their, their numbers are a little, I mean, they haven't identified what their budget's going to be for their next fiscal year, but they at least locked that four million and they're going forward. I think the numbers they were looking at today, I mean, the nice thing you got, it just makes it
Yeah, simple. Yeah, simple.
The same price per, per resident, basically, regardless of where you live.
And we agreed to lock it in for five years, which is nice, because you know how many times that came up.
Right.
Yeah, that's great, well, it's been a long process, so.
We won't have anything to talk about those meetings anymore.
Oh, you'll have plenty.
Yeah. All right. You got number six, that's your last one.
Good. That's one for you guys.
Yeah. No, thank you. All right. Thank you, Andy. No add-ins? Nope. Yeah, all right. Let's move right along here, so we're gonna go back into official action items, we've already done number one. Um, we can move on to, uh, number two here, which is a renewal for a public service license for Main Boat LLC, um, is that what we normally did that? Did I read, understand there was something different on that one?
They missed the, the renewal.
Okay, missed the renewal or something.
They have to, the state, they have to reapply, so we have to approve it again.
That's it, okay, yeah, that's, that's, there is something, something to that effect, so.
So they did reapply.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they used to, they used to sort of, the, the alcohol, and they, they just forgot to.
Forgot to renew for it, so, yeah, okay. All right, well, here, a motion on their renewal.
I'll move that we, um, approved their application for a, a public service license.
Thank you, Tom, and he's, all right, Andrew's gonna second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we got, uh, motion carries. All right, that's good, we'll go on to, yeah, what's the number four here, we get the MMA. Policy.
We got a vote for two, right?
Right, yeah.
So the Legislative Policy Committee for, um, the district, we're in Sarah Macy of Newcastle and Dusty Jones, a select board member of Wisconsin. That are interested in serving, we got Jim as representatives.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve and check off those two presented ones.
All right.
And she will keep us in the loop, right? One of the two will keep us in the loop.
She'll keep Andy in the loop.
Yeah. Josh made a motion, I hear a second. No seconds, all right. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we'll move that one along. And now we're on to appointment of town officials. Sorry, I got to flip through my pages here, I keep losing my page.
It's right, uh.
Going, there we are, there we are, okay. All right. So I'm gonna make a modified motion here on this one, I'm gonna, uh, sorry with the board here, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, um, the appointed officials list, uh, with the exception, um, under Row Commissioner, I'd like to appoint Andrew Door.
I'll second the prepared list with the motion of Daryl's Andrew Doors.
With the adjustment, okay. All right, do I hear, uh, discussion? All those in favor? Or opposed, opposed, okay, yeah. All right.
I think that what we're trying to do is some, what is being done. The responsibility for some of this is the fault of the select board itself. We have never set up any standards or procedures.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
And it's our fault, not our person.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll, this will be a work in project, a working, working in progress, so.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you, look. Okay.
So I do have one question. Andy from the sealer of weights and measures.
Yeah.
How do, how do we? How did you do that on Vinyl Haven? Did you have somebody that was out there or?
I don't recall, um, there had been at one point, um, so we've been making phone calls to understand. My understanding right now is that if we don't appoint one, we notify the state and the state.
Assigns one.
Does it, will, okay, never come and do it. I, I can, when we do, yeah, I can broaden that a little bit.
You might, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, fuel dispensers, um, they're, uh, so, yeah, so it's a, it's, from what I understand on the state's perspective, towns can do it or not do it, it's, it's an elective thing, right? And we used to have, um, yearly, um, there was a, a gentleman that, um, would come and do the dispensers.
Or something.
Yeah, I can remember the name dispenser, so. About twelve years go by, and I don't have anybody to check the dispensers, and I start calling the state. And I, I actually, they were surprised because I wanted, is it somebody? I want somebody to come check my dispensers, and, uh, we never got it done until we put the, we did new dispensers in twenty nineteen. And I had to chase after the state and, and demand, you know, I, I requested, like, people don't call and request this, like, no, I want you to come down and seal my dispensers. That was twenty nineteen, the last time they were, they were done, so they just, it's, it's, uh, they've got, I can't remember the guy's name, there's somebody different that's doing it, but, um, it's just one person and they, if there's no problems anywhere, you know, they're not gonna come check, so, yeah, so it's a, it's an interesting.
What do they actually do? What is the sealer of weights and measure?
Calibration.
Calibration, yeah, yeah, so.
Gas pumps.
Yeah, yeah.
Dispensing things.
Weight scales, things like that, so if, if there's any discrepancy, they put, you know, they'll, they put a seal on it, so it's been checked, you're good. Yeah.
So do you put up a big seal of approval sign after they did that?
Yeah, no, there's a, they, they put them right on the dispenser, I have, I have one on each one of my dispensers, I have a sticker there that says, yeah, it was done. Yeah, but it's, if you're far between, they've got, it's just like, and they've got, you know, one guy doing it for whatever district, nine counties or something, yeah, yeah, so. Yeah.
And how important is it?
Yeah, just to clarify on the, on the list presented for, um, officials, the tax collectors more of a, until we get someone in the spot, which.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I'm hopeful we'll be able to do by the end of the week.
That's the position that's open.
Yes.
Um, our new town planner started yesterday.
Oh, oh, great, yep.
Um, and she'll be back tomorrow, if anyone's around and wants to pop in and say hi to Isabelle.
So she's here Tuesday, Thursday.
That's her intention, yes, um, she's got a fairly lengthy commute, um, so I think her intentions certainly are to be here and get a good feel for things initially and kind of see where, you know, what can be remote, what can't be, there'll be a lot of meetings with other folks um, for projects, um, I know the one project that's kind of been coming up, that'll be in, probably in August for the planning board to consider. Um, you know, they've got folks spread between Portland and, I think, here, um, so that might be a chance for her to meet up with them somewhere down that way, where most of them are. Um, so, yeah, it'll be flexible and she's splitting time with us in Booth Bay Harbor, so she was down there today.
Right.
All right, and we have, what, the inland fisheries and wildlife registration nominee?
Yes.
And, uh, Zaskem, yes, Becky?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a note, uh, motion to. Thank you, Bartalata.
Yeah.
Tom, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Right, that one along. We have last cemetery deed, right?
I think I put those in your packet.
Yeah, those are all pages there that you could be signed by the board, in most cases, I tried to keep them all in one spot, so I don't get them too shifted around here, yeah.
There was, um, one, one cemetery deed that was ready to be signed by the board.
Yeah, where's, uh? They're with me, everybody, it's in here somewhere.
It's the only piece of property I've got that doesn't, doesn't.
Really? Tax certificate, some memorandum. Minutes. Is that the one right there? No, that's not, it's.
And this one we're supposed to pass around to?
Yeah, we've got to sign all that. Why am I missing it here? Did I lose it on Andy?
I didn't take it this time.
Yeah, yeah, we stuck something in Josh's packet last.
Tried to blame me, no, I never saw it.
I thought I remember seeing it sitting there, let me see if I scoffed it up in my, uh,
Yeah, sure.
In my packet here, I got a lot, I got a lot of papers moving around. Oh, look at that. Josh put it in my, uh, bag.
I might have.
Yeah.
Payback.
All right, so there's a cemetery deed, and I never get these right, how I'm supposed to word it on the.
Cemetery deed and perpetual care agreement.
Yeah.
For.
And you for the name of the, the two folks there, right?
Yeah.
Susan Rosen, Frederick and Fred Eversole.
I'll make that motion.
I'm speaking a motion, you said it. All right, Lou seconds, all right, any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Who was the last name?
Eversole, E V E S O L E, E V E R S O L E, sorry. What's that? All right, I'm gonna have to keep all that together there so we can sign that stuff, um, all right. Um, so we're on to discussion items, um, we'll start, uh, start down here with Tom and work our way down through and.
Okay, um, I saw, um, you preview trimming back some of the foliage over on Bristol and School Street, which is good. Because that was starting to become.
Over there now.
But, uh, noticed that the signs after a year now have not been moved by the state, so, um, they had agreed to move the signs further down the road towards the hospital, because when you're coming to the stop there on school and you're gonna go left on Bristol and you look down there, they sometimes block the view of the car coming over the hill. So all I have to do is move them like, you know, twenty, thirty feet respectively down the, down the road, and they agreed to do it. Yeah, M D O T, it was here, they were here, uh, in person, and they said they would get it done.
It's in the seven-year plan.
No, they said they would do it pretty recently, sooner, I thought. You don't remember?
Oh, I remember.
They don't. Thank, Dom, yes, Lou?
Uh, the only thing I have to say is, thank you, Tom, for all your work, I'll see you on the sea.
Oh, it's fun, I enjoy it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, Josh and I used to have a lot of fun there.
It was, it was quite entertaining.
Watching him go with Chester.
I was gonna say, going head to head with South Bristol, yeah, so.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, they said, boy, we can't wait for, uh, Josh and Chester to get together on this.
They get together before playing that, so.
Tom did not know Chester was a selectman here.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was way back.
He was, he's quite a character.
Andrea, any discussion items?
What happened to the broadband pub, the broadband project?
It stalled right now, more or less, right, yeah, um, we, there's, it's expensive.
I know, but.
Yeah.
You know, as an educator, I just want everyone to have.
Yeah, yeah. Do we, is there any activity with it, uh, all, are you familiar with the broadband?
I, I happened to ask Sarah today.
Yeah.
Um, among other things, where that stood.
Yeah.
Um, and more or less, she's echoed the same thing, and so there were some numbers that came back to both communities about cost to do the project.
Yeah.
Um, and I think my understanding.
Wanted us to pay.
It was, yeah.
My understanding is that both towns submitted jointly a, um, application for community direct spending, um, with the federal. I don't know if it was with which representative or senator, but, um, and they're waiting, still waiting to hear back on that. Absent receiving funds on that, you know, it sounded like it was just kind of on hold, um, at the moment, so I, that was one of the things to check in when we did the goals workshop.
Yeah, we can check in and we got it, and yeah, that's right, that's right, we, we moved, uh, something to, uh, uh, you know, what you just said, um, but it was, uh, yeah, there was a big expensive buy-in, um, with, um.
Three, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And it was like in two weeks, it was, uh, to get stuff moving, you know, within these, so it was just, it wasn't doable at the time, so, but it's not, uh, yeah, it just, it's stalled, but it's gonna, it's still simmering.
Money available for it, right? Yes.
Some.
Yeah, some, some.
Not a lot, not enough.
Not enough to cover up.
We thought we were gonna go forward with it until they came back and asked us to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, there needs to be a better, a better plan, it's just, uh, yeah, so. But, well, yeah, we can, when the, uh, workshop there, we can.
Okay.
We can up again, so, yeah. Josh?
Well, I, I had mentioned the Andy already about, uh, let's see, road branches and bushes. Um, Branch Road, a couple of years ago, we had a fire on Branch Road, and all the fire trucks were hitting the branches and the trees as we were going down, and I'd mentioned to it years ago that after that fire, that need to be cut back and has yet to be cut back. I received a complaint from a resident on a offshoot of that road that they met a CMP truck there last week, and it was quite treacherous, but, uh, and there's other roads and everything that we've identified over the last three or four years that still need to be brushed back, that has been neglected for the last three or four years.
And who do we get to do that?
Uh, we have a chipper and a crew, so now that we're staff, maybe let's get moving on that, it's been identified in a ride around, so it's about time to move on that. I've also received complaints about the pedestrian crosswalk sign on Main Street, right on main drag, any heavy bigger trucks or trailers or ambulances or fire trucks that try to go down there during the day. Uh, is there any way we can find a different home for that pedestrian crossing sign? The, the one right on the Main Street.
Oh, oh.
The, the, by Rennie's.
Oh.
Ambulances have to move, you know, move it to get by, fire trucks have to move it, get by.
That's ours estate, that's.
That's ours.
It is, okay.
If we could find a different home and make it a little bit easier, that getting gets hit.
Yeah.
Is it even still out there?
It's there, it's, it's there.
It's, sometimes it's askew.
Yeah.
Different, uh.
Because.
Angles and different lanes.
I haven't noticed, is it the only crosswalk with a sign?
That's, yeah, yeah.
There's more.
And we, we've tried it further up. Um, front of First National Bank.
Super narrow right there.
So if we could figure out a different home, I know it's great to have, but that does become a nuisance.
Yeah, it's tight, tight.
Now, the question I have for the board is usually we set the mill rate, uh, the last meeting in July or the first meeting in August, to give taxpayers a little bit of time to absorb what they're getting hit with.
Yeah.
Um, so if that's something we can have our assessors agent maybe prepared to get this moving for our next meeting or not.
Yeah, I think we were just talking with Ed Day, um, he's still doing some spring work and thinks he needs probably at least two more weeks in the field to follow up on, if we want to pick up any.
Any additional, yeah.
Um, and so I mentioned the first meeting in August. Um, if we could aim for that.
That, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't go further than the first meeting in August.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's just a matter of how much, what they pick up or don't, I mean, it's.
Right.
Yeah. What they don't get won't be.
As, as of April first, you know, so. Um, so if we can get that taken care of, and also, I know I've been out of the loop a little bit. Sorry for doing too much, keeping going, but I also, the water, waterfront progress. How are we coming with the final? Uh, I guess it was a permit we were waiting for.
A waiver.
A waiver.
Uh, we weren't gonna get the permit, so we were asking for a waiver, um. I understand, so right now, E D A, we've explained the situation with them and what FEMA is asking of us, and, uh, our engineers responded with, to FEMA saying, you know, we can't see building the wall, a wall across the boat launch, because that, a permanent one, that makes the boat launch unusable. You know, and point out a few of the other things that they were raising, they wanted us to do in order to get the, the full Clomar, um, and so uh, we're still, they're still working to try and get that waiver while we communicate back and forth with FEMA with ninety-day wait times from them, um, we had asked E D A if they'd allow us to at least proceed with kind of phase two and get the drainage stuff addressed in the parking lot, so that's where it was left at this point before the holiday, uh, was E D A was gonna see if they could if our contact there could allow us to get permission for us to kind of proceed while we continue to wait on FEMA's response and that go, that back and forth. We, we explained how we were, our designers were coming up with mods or, or alternatives to try and still have a solution that would be adequate. Um, allowed for vertical, uh, increases, you know, in that wall height, but not be a permanent taller wall, um. And so they were, we're trying in terms of FEMA, so they, we're hopeful that maybe they can give us that green light to can at least continue on the storm drainage aspects and that catch basin, that large.
Right. Get the parking lot proper.
Right.
Moving along, yeah.
So was that the only holdup now, or is Wright Pierce still waiting to hear, hear back on the study of? I don't know what they were, there was a study they, they had to do, it was gonna take like a hundred and twenty days.
I haven't heard about the hundred and.
Yeah, what was that last, um?
Oh, I, I guess maybe if you could get an update from Wright Pierce and see where they are and see what the schedule is and how far off they are on the schedule that they signed the contract with.
Yeah, my underst, I mean, so we've talked, had a few meetings, um, with the engineers and with, uh, George joined us, um, and who's the other one, there's someone else that joined, um, so we've been talking, and my, I didn't, wasn't aware of anything on their end that they needed to wait for, they were just working with FEMA to try and kind of counter what they were asking us to modify.
So I, I guess, our original schedule is we were waiting for like a sixty-day period, and it was supposed to be ready for about March first so we could put things out to bid.
Okay.
Uh, mid-March, so we are in July.
I know the FEMA has been a big holdup. When we, when FEMA sends us something, if we've responded, they usually reserve most of the ninety days to get back to us. Um, that's what they did last time.
Yeah.
And so they just countered their last letter in the early June. So it could be after summer before FEMA respond, that's why we asked E D A, can we at least proceed with, because E D A won't let us go forward until we had the waiver.
Right.
And FEMA won't give us the waiver.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's what they've been circling, and I'm not sure if that was similar to what you were referring to.
Well, there was a study they had to do on the shoreline, um, something, was it?
Yeah.
It was another one that somehow they missed, um, and it was gonna take a hundred and twenty days.
I wonder if that's the one that came back and adjusted the, um, we'll need clarification from.
But this was, this had nothing to do with what FEMA, FEMA had, it was a D E P issue, I think.
They have not.
So I'd just like to see your status of how far away we are from putting this out to bid and how far we are, are off from our timeline. Because we're way, we're way behind.
We're off on it.
Yeah, and it's not, the FEMA part is its own little entity, but we should, there should be nothing else holding it up if it's just the FEMA thing.
Yeah.
And do we have grant money that we're using that needs to be used in a certain timeframe?
I think if they're the ones, the feds are the ones holding this up, then the feds really can't say why.
Yeah, EDA is a big portion of that, and they've, we've gotten a two-year extension already, and I think we're certainly within that window, so. But, yeah, EDA won't give the green light until, that's where they're just trying to, and maybe there was another, that other piece, I'll find out. They haven't heard much about DEP or a hundred and twenty-day study thing, so.
I'll confirm, you can find out and, and we have to, we can get Wright Pearson for an update to on the next meeting or something. So we're at, so. Cool.
Yeah, because I just wanted to make sure where we were, because we need to figure out how we're gonna oversee for the town on that project. If we're going to hire an outside entity to come in and be our eyes and ears and hold contractors and engineers accountable. So we don't get into things like shoreline sags and all that. We'll give them the authority to watch out for us, not for contractors or engineers or whoever else.
Sound good.
I'm good now.
Sure.
I've been ho, I've been held up for a week, a couple of months, yeah.
You didn't have to bring them all at once.
Well, I haven't been here, too many games.
All right, well, I'm not going to add any, anything to it, so we can move things along. We still got to win assessors meeting right after, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll move things along, so if we want to, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from selectmen's.
So we're going to do.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yeah, we'll just segue right, yeah, it was, I think it was all in the same packet, wasn't it?
I don't know.
That's the end, Josh.
We'll hear a second on the adjournment. Andrea, seconds, sorry. Uh, any discussion, all those in favor? All right, there we go, so we'll adjourn, and with that, I'll call the Town and Demoskata Board of Assessors meeting to order for July sixth. And we have some minutes from the way back on the sixteenth of March. Yes, I'll move the minutes of March sixteenth.
I'll second.
Josh, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, before they're minutes have moved, and you don't stay, because you weren't there, right? All right. Okay.
Supplemental tax credit.
Little tax certificate and warrant here.
So, I mean, it looks like they had one property assessed to the wrong. This was a sale that.
It was a sale, I think it was two, two different pieces, and they bought the other one as well, so they bought both of them and they taxed the former owner of it.
So debating the one that kind of won and supplementing the other.
Gotcha, so, okay. Yeah, it looks like it was all, yeah.
Only thing I'd recommend you do is on that supplemental tax certificate and warrant is make a motion that with the new point, with the new temporary appointment as tax inspector, and we just, for the record, make sure that they change that from Heather Dubby to me. Otherwise, you're good to have that signed in a motion, you can just make that move.
Okay.
Make that motion as stated. How's that sound?
Yeah.
So the supplemental tax certificate warrant, you got to list it out who it is.
This one.
So it's, what is it, Thomas Houseman and Jennifer Fox. Matt Lock, zero, one, zero, dash, zero, zero, four, with a value of thirty-six thousand eight hundred. Tax will be fif, uh, five hundred eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. And is that what your motion is?
That's what your motion is now. I'll rescind my motion, let you.
And with the current tax collect to be listed as Andrew Door.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And then I'll do the notice of property tax assessment.
Continue right on.
Review with a supplemental supplemental assessment for Madeline Woodbury, and I would assume it's her estate. Which is the account number sixty-eight. Success to the wrong owner, and that is now being corrected, and that amount is five hundred and eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. And that is Matt ten, lock four, count sixty-eight.
Tom, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? So moved. So we need all of those.
It looks like it.
That's, yeah, right. Yes, yeah. Discussion items on the, from the Board of Assessors? Aaron, none? Air motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors.
Tom, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Oh, we have a bunch of stuff to sign, everybody runs off here, so. Josh, you want to take these down your end?